If I could ask everyone to silence their cellphones, please. Make sure I do my own.
Yes.
And shall we raise, rise for the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Gentlemen, we have minutes of our meeting held on August 22nd, 10:00 a.m. here. Could I have a motion to accept those?
Will you make that motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good job on the minutes, Colleen.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Good job. Okay. I guess before we start the meeting, I'll just throw this out here because I got a phone call last night that our governor is going to be at Stone Mountain tomorrow.
Yes.
Oh, is that, oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. On 106. He's scheduled to be there around 11:30. He'll probably be late. I'll put that out there. They tend to run a little late. But he will be there tomorrow. I guess they're doing some sort of a meet and greet photo op. He's picking, I guess, an apple.
Yeah, the first apple, I think, of the season he'll be picking. He has invited a selectman to go. I'm happy to join you if you wish. It will be, like you said, 11:30. And the Rolfs have also given us some apples for anyone to take if they would like.
Oh, so that's where the apples came from?
Yes.
All right.
They came from Stone Mountain Farm. He dropped off some apples and donuts to some of the departments in town and invited you guys to attend tomorrow's first pick of the season.
There you go. Well, they happened to call me last night. His mom actually called me last night and wanted to make sure that we knew about it.
Very nice.
So that was nice, so. But it's open to the public if anybody wants to come. Our first order of business is to appoint Alicia to serve as a rep on the Concord Regional Solid Waste Cooperative Joint Board, and we're asking Brian Jacks to be an alternate.
Yep, before Jean left, she was the rep for the Concord Regional Solid Waste. So it'll just be appointing myself to serve as the rep. We don't have much to do with the Concord Regional Solid Waste. We still have to serve on the board, and we'll appoint Brian to serve as alternate in case I can't attend a meeting or become, yeah, inability. So I did create a motion if somebody wants to.
I'll make the motion to appoint Alicia Gibson and Brian Jacks to the Concord Regional Solid Waste Cooperative Joint Board.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our second order of business, we have Rich Fournier here. It's in regards to a discussion about issue on Nancy Drive. Rich, if you want to come up here and sit, you're more than welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm here for Sue King, who lives on 32 Nancy Drive. She's working, so she couldn't be here. She had a sewer plugged back in June, and when I first started looking at the situation, I met, she called me. I'm a friend and a neighbor. I thought we were going to be discussing where the town's liability started as far as the sewer line. Since then, I've actually talked to Raul Services, and I've reread their description of what they've done. So I've got three copies here.
Watch out for the, just watch out for the wires.
The front page is a copy of the bill and description of the work this last June. The second page is a copy of the bill and description from five years ago. What it basically says, if you read what I've underlined, the line was clogged just before entering the city main in the street. That's what their description was this past June. Five years ago, it was clogged, seemed to be at the main. The thing that's interesting is this went 35 years and never had a clog until 2017. And then all of a sudden, now, five years later, we've got the same problem, and it's a single woman living in a house by herself. If you read the next line that I highlighted on the first one, service takes 245s and ends the main completely vertical, creating a clog point. I brought this with me because a picture's worth a thousand words, okay? Pitch of this is an eight-inch pipe, and this is a four-inch pipe. This is the pipe coming from the house, okay, out in the middle of the street. If I'm not mistaken, that line is probably 15, 16 feet deep. So this line is 10, 12 feet long. What they're all saying is the clog is right here in this fitting. The question is, what happened? You know, what's changed? You know, has it shrunk? You know, has it moved? Has it, not shrunk, but has it settled? Has it broken? I doubt very serious it's broken. But the problem is right here, this fitting. That's what they say in both kinds. That is part of the main, okay? That's, I don't think that anybody's arguing that the main belongs to the town. So the question is, what are we going to do about it? How are we going to figure out exactly what's happening? How are we going to figure out how to fix it so it doesn't happen again? I mean, if you can imagine, she called me on Saturday night, and her washing machine, which is in the basement, was full of brown sewage. Okay, I mean, not a pretty cycle. I suggested that she run the cycle three or four times with solid bleach before she used it again. So I'm here to say, you know, I think we, as a town, have a problem, and we've got to figure out how we're going to solve it. And at the same time, obviously, there's a bill to be involved. I think the biggest, the bigger item of the problem, it's going to happen again if it happened, you know, within a five-year period of one person living in a home. There's something wrong in that main sewer, more than likely with this fitting. And just so you guys all know, I mean, I'm a retired civil engineer. I ran a business that we built surge treatment plants, and I was on the sewer commission from start to finish. So I do have a very familiarity with sewer lines. I don't know. Where do we go from here, guys?
Well, I can only tell you from my experience building a fairly large community in both Laconia and Belmont, and we put all the mains in as well as the lines, all right? And there was an inspector from the city on site for all the main lines because they own the main lines, all right? What comes off the house into the line is not their responsibility. They didn't have an engine, they didn't have anybody inspecting that because whoever owns a home, when they buy the home, they've bought that line right to that main line. So I guess my feeling is, is that she owns that line right into where it connects to the, to the main line.
The town doesn't own this fitting?
Pardon?
Do you agree the town owns this fitting?
No, no, I don't agree with that.
This is part of, this is part of the main?
Well, I would say the main is, no.
Do you have sewer line coming in? I mean, this is the main, that was.
We don't own it. But no, the main line is the public line. Let's put it that way. Whoever owns it is the public line. Obviously, someone gave her or whomever permission to connect to that line, but they're responsible for that connection, from that line to that connection. That's my two cents worth. I mean, that's how I, that's, that's how we, when we built this community, that we were responsible for that line right into the main line.
I'm not sure that's really part of the discussion here.
Oh, okay. All right. I'm just using that as an example.
All right. I mean, I'll tell you, when we built the sewer line in Belmont, we ran the main, we ran all the feeds to the property lines. That was based on what the sewer commission wanted to do, what the town selectman wanted to do, what the entity wanted to do because they didn't want anybody out in the middle of the road digging 16 feet deep in red sand. But I don't think that's really, the question here, the question is, something's wrong with the main. Something happened to the main. Either open up this joint or causes the plug.
Isn't if something happened to the main, it would be affecting other people?
No, but not particularly. Particularly if it was just this joint. And it does not seem to be. Because when this happened, I did what I would have done as a sewer commissioner. I went and knocked on three neighbors, two upstream, one downstream. And then when I had Raul came around, I had him pull the manholes to make sure there was fluid going through, that it was not a main problem. That found that there was no problem, that anybody else, it's just this connection that is the problem.
Well, you got me thoroughly confused.
Huh?
Beyond flushing a toilet, that's where my expertise with sewer goes.
Well, that's why, that's why I brought this.
But if I read these bills and read them somewhere near accurately in 2017, August 9th, "Service expert cleared the sewer line and ran a camera at no charge." Clog seems to be at the main, at the main.
Right, exactly.
So if that pipe or that fitting, that elbow fitting going into that main is the problem, that's in fact her adaptation to the main.
No, no. The town, the town left this for the connection to be made. She didn't put this fitting in.
And then five years later, five years go by, and everything works fine, and we have a backup again. One time, what's the date on this for the?
2017.
Yeah, I'm always looking for the date.
August 9th.
August 9th, and here it is, June, so within.
Five years.
Five years. And it doesn't say absolutely on there inspection with a camera.
I agree.
And then if I were in this lady's shoes, not understanding, I'm not, but on the description of the bill in 618 or 22, labor, equipment, overtime, additional labor to complete scope of work, energy service call, warranty call free, it says, but then charge $199 for it. But item four, camera waived, camera charge value of $275. So when five years later, if you bought an automobile from me, from me five years ago and asked me for a warranty on it, I'd say probably not. But it's been five years, and if I'd had seemingly the same problem, I'd maybe throw money away. But their first bill does not definitely say it's at the main. It says it seems at the main.
Oh, I agree. It does, but there is, there's a problem.
I'd say she's got to have a camera to get to decide where the, where the problem really lies.
Okay. And if she runs the camera again and we find that is this, this fitting is wrong, then is the town going to pay for that camera on?
I don't think we, well.
I'm not in a position to, I'd be quite frank with you, I'm not a sewer expert, so I can't answer that. But I would, I would caution, I'd have to read this.
He probably has.
He probably have that.
Yeah.
Those are from minutes of a meeting.
Yeah.
You've got those, okay. So by that definition, it says we're not responsible as a town for that connection.
Well, that just depends on whether you consider this fitting as part of the main. And obviously it is because without this fitting, the main wouldn't run. It'd be a hole.
No, the pipe would have been solid, it'd have been a straight-through fitting. There'd been no adaptation to that property. So the problem, when you, when they put the line to her home, that became her line. Because if there, if there was a union, if that was a union rather than a T, there would be no problem for her property, but you would have no sewer on it. So when she, when they put that in there, that became her responsibility for that property. That's the way I look at it.
Okay. Your opinion?
But again, I'm not a sewer expert like you are.
All right, so I assume then we're getting nowhere at this point. And I will obviously talk to her about running another camera.
Isn't that what you do, though? Wouldn't you look down there again to see? It's an unusual amount, and five years is a long time for something to come back, is what I'm saying. If, if there was a problem at that fitting back in 2017 that caused either the pipe got crushed or didn't fix itself in five years?
No, but if you've got a single person, they're putting out very little sewer compared to the four families, four people that were there for 35 years before. I think, obviously, the first thing I'm going to ask is Craig to give me a copy, let me come in and look at the video that the town ran of the main. And then also, I need to look at the actual contract drawings from 1980 that showed what fitting actually went in there. I'm assuming it's a T-Y. This talks about it being a vertical drop into the thing. It could be a straight T, which would be unusual. Rich, I've given you what we have. I wasn't in charge of the contract drawings and, I've given you what we have.
We've got some contract drawings. I got a draw.
I've given you what we have. We have what, I've given you what we have.
Do you have the video?
I would have to check because we only started doing CCT new work a few years ago. I believe that's been.
We do a section every, we do a section every summer.
I know, I know.
Well, and I think the other issue, the other, oh, I'm sorry. The other issue that I question because we've, obviously, we're finding, we're finding people are putting things down, their drains, that they really shouldn't be. And I know Craig's done some work, so we've put flyers out and everything. And obviously, and I'm not saying that this woman has, and don't get me wrong, all right? But again, we have no control over that.
I actually, I actually asked her a very personal question two weeks ago.
Yeah, well, no.
You know, any chance you've been using corporation wipes or anything like that and putting it down on the toilet? She says, I do use a case wipe. It's going to be trash because I know from 2017, the only thing that goes down is water and toilet paper. Okay? Very personal question. I'm sorry. So that's not, that's not chasing this particular.
All right, all right. I just know that, I mean, I can only go by my own experience, all right? And, and believe me, when we built some of this public water and sewer, there's a lot to the contracts and there's a lot to it, and I just know that my experience has been that the city or town or whatever organization owns the main, and anybody who is fortunate enough to be allowed to tap into that main, they're responsible from the tap to the house. That's been my experience.
Okay. And Ruth, that's in our rules and regulations.
Oh, okay.
So all, you know, the homeowner is responsible for all service connections.
And basically, what Rich is saying is that we, we, you know, or, and we don't even own the main, do we? I mean.
We are responsible for the main.
Okay.
So say this connection was done 40 years ago.
Yeah.
I mean, even if it was done at a high level, things happened, you know, frosting around and stuff like that.
No, we know that from just this past weekend.
We've had, we've had no other problems with any other service connections on that main.
Yeah.
And the one that we, the one that we did, I mean, Rich's neighbor had an issue last year, and they understood, and they fixed it. You know, we had, we had the woman up on Green Street. That was over a $10,000 fix.
Yeah.
They fixed it because the connection came back at the main. It's their responsibility. And I told Rich, you know, the next time, when they have a problem like that, we would appreciate a call. We don't appreciate Raul coming in and popping our manholes, checking our main. That's not their job. It's our job, when someone's having a problem with their service line, to be the first call, to be the first call, to go out and check and see if it is our responsibility. So we go out and check the main, and then we can go from there. If they need to call a private contractor, that would be, that would be the protocol. That would, that would be the way things should be handled. So for it to be handled in a way that I get a bill on my, you know, I mean, I talked to Rich a couple times and I explained to him our rules, our regulations. I gave him what information we had on the main. Of course, I mean, I can't control what records have been kept over the last 40 years, and I mean, that's PMT. I mean, before my time, it's just, you know, things, you know, we're a very small operation, one or two people, you know, it's, things get lost in the shuffle. We have looked. But I'm very confident that there is no problem with the main. Something has maybe happened with that service connection. But it's been five years. You'd think something would rear its ugly head before five years. So, you know, I don't know. I just know that these are our rules, these are our regulations.
I know.
If we bend them for one, we're going to have to bend them for others.
We're opening. I understand.
And we haven't, you know, we haven't given any leeway in the past. So, I mean, trust me, I don't like to see this happen anymore than, anymore than anyone. But that's just, unfortunately, those are the rules. We can't be responsible for everybody's service connection in the main.
Sonny, how do you feel about this? Do you think we're?
I don't know. It just seems kind of odd. You get the same main on everybody's property, I would imagine, and, and yet, when they connect it to this one here, it's, it's creating a problem. But it's hard for me to really say because I'm not a sewer person. Just trying to figure out the realism of it, and it's only on this connection here that's giving a problem. So I, I don't know. I just, hard for me to say.
Guys, I can't believe we can't, we don't have the contract drawings. They've got to be somewhere in town or, I mean.
You were in charge of it.
I, I, I.
You were in charge of some of the drawings.
They were there.
Where?
Down in Frankie's office in a, in a fan drawer. I mean, I spent three or four days when the Hollister Sewer Commission, developing a master drawing of the whole town, putting on what contract each section was under. I mean, I spent a lot of time so whoever came in after me could say, all right, we got a problem on Mill Street, let's go to contract three, pull it out, there's the drawings, we can see what was done. I cannot believe those drawings are not somewhere in town. Somebody didn't throw away drawings.
I wouldn't think so, but.
Particularly if they were in, they were in a file. I mean, they weren't, you know, just roll up and pull them. They were in a file. They've got to be damn near somewhere. What would those drawings have to do with the current condition of the main?
It would give you a detail of exactly what was, what was installed there. So if, so if.
You're not, you're not saying contract drawings because those would be construction plans. You're talking as-bills.
No, I'm talking about contract drawings. What we signed as a town.
Contract drawings are not the same as as-bills.
I, I.
Contract, contract drawings are construction plans that the contractor's supposed to follow.
Right.
And after those, after that construction has been done, as-bills are created by the contractor to signify what is, what has been.
What was installed? Right. And those weren't, those weren't recorded?
Yes, they were.
So we can get copies of them, then we can get copies of the as-bills if we can't find them?
Ruth, I'll be honest with you. I mean, that was 40 years ago.
I know, I know. They might not.
We don't have, we never, we never requested as-bills for the downtown water project.
Oh, okay.
So I don't have, I don't have as-bills for downtown. I don't have as-bills for Pleasant Valley. I have construction plans, which are construction plans.
Right. Doesn't necessarily mean that that's what was used.
They're not, they're not connections.
Yeah.
No. If I see the construction drawing, I can see what fitting they used. So if we do hire, Raul will come down and run the camera again. I'll know what I'm looking for, whether I'm looking for a T-Y or a T, okay? 245s, whatever. That's why you need the construction drawings.
Yeah. Honestly, Rich, I've done, I've done a lot of camera work in the past with Lenny and I worked for the sewer department. We had our own camera truck, and we did a lot of that. I would say it would be almost impossible to tell what type of fitting was, was used by an internal camera.
Well.
To, to, to get the gist of it, you would need to physically dig up the road and dig up and see what's there.
Well, if you know what you're looking for, you might be able to figure it out.
Yes.
And, and again.
I mean, I guess it's up to her if she wants to spend the money to find that out. I mean, it's not our dime by any means because it's not our line. So if she wants to spend the money and have it camered, that's, I guess, her responsibility. And it, and I guess it's, the consensus I'm getting is that if she doesn't like, I guess, what we're trying to figure out, or our, our rules or how we're deciphering them, then I guess she has to take the next step. I mean, I don't know how else we can do that, you know?
All right. Just the as-bills?
Yeah, would be.
As, just so I know, probably how, five, 10 years before the sewer commission was dissolved. We had all those as-built drawings put on CDs. We spent a fair amount of money.
So there were as-bills, so the.
There's got as-bills, drawings, that I mean, I just want to, I mean, this is how bad the record-keeping was. I mean, we spent a lot of money on CDs. So that if we ever lost a paper, we'd have the CDs.
We do, we do have ties, and I gave you a copy of the ties to the connection. As far as the actual connection, as-bills.
Well, maybe, maybe we can do.
We can look again.
Yeah, maybe we can do a little bit of research down to the basement, I guess. Yeah.
I just, you know, I can't.
We'll do a little, we'll try to, we'll try to do a little research and see when we find those drawings because.
See if you can find a video of the drawing, please. Okay?
All right.
Thank you.
We'll do, yeah, we'll do our due diligence part, that's for sure.
All right, thank you.
All right. Our next order of business is building inspector resignation.
Yes. As you are aware, our current building, our part-time building inspector, Russ Wheeler, has given his resignation. His last day will be on Friday. We, I have looked around on the list serve, and there are currently 12 openings in the state of New Hampshire for code enforcement and building inspectors. We have a current part-time code enforcement officer, as you know, Mark Eckberg, and he has since day one showed interest in both of the positions.
Which they were together in the beginning.
They were together in the past, and when Steve left, we hired Russ full-time, but he really wasn't interested in full-time, and we had gone to part-time and separated the positions. And we have, you know, as you know, met and decided to offer the position to Mark Eckberg as, and bring it back to the full-time code enforcement and building inspector.
So Russ is going to work with Mike for a while on this?
Yes. He's going to work on a part-time basis, whether it be five to 10 hours, he, you know, he's.
He's available.
He told me he's available if Mark needs it. Mark doesn't have any of his certifications, but he is hitting the ground running and going to obtain his certifications as soon as possible. He will start on Monday in a full-time capacity.
It's my understanding that some towns, and I'm only, that some of them have building inspectors and they're not certified.
True.
I was surprised.
True. Yep. And actually, when I did my research, not all of them required the certification. A few required, a few allowed you to get it within a year or a period of time set forth.
So we're not out in left field by offering that and doing that, then?
No.
Okay. And obviously, if we have Russ on to fall back on for, yep, okay.
And there are other, you know, part-time building inspectors that we can also reach out to. There's other means, whether it be until he gets up to, up to speed on the electrical and mechanical.
Remember, we used to use, help me, the guy from Sammington?
The older gentleman.
Yes. He was a legislator. I'm having a brain cramp. And he used to fill in when someone went on vacation. The name will come to me halfway through this meeting.
Was it Bill Tobin?
Bill Tobin, yes. Bill and Faith Tobin. That's exactly right. Yep. And they used to fill in in between times. Yeah. Nice. All right.
Yeah, so.
All right. Well, we can only hope. Employment issues, right? Am I right? Land use part-time.
Yes. Sarah has had an ad out for a long time for the land use part-time clerk to replace Dawn, who was hired and had left. It just wasn't a good fit for her. And so we have hired Susan Pastore. She'll be with us starting on 9/15 in a part-time capacity, but she will be here five days a week, which is what the office really needs. She'll have part-time hours, but she'll at least be in the office five days a week, which is huge for Sarah and the department as the department is very, very busy and needs all the staff that they can get in a full-time capacity.
Okay, all right. Now we have household hazardous waste coordinator.
Yes, I will have Tom speak, but Tom has indicated that this was his last year coordinating the Household Hazardous Waste Day, and he would like to pass the coordination baton off to someone else. So, Tom, if you want to speak to this or if you have a suggestion?
It just, this, when this started up and the town decided to join up with the.
Lakes Region, whatever it was. Yeah, yeah.
The only place in town that was, had the space. Um, the only place in town that was, had the space to even accommodate was the fire department at that time. This was before the Highway Garage, Highway Garage was built, it was back when it was on Sardan Street. So, there wasn't any place in town to really, uh, take care of this at that point there. So, we, it was done, yeah, at the fire department. It was through, uh, I can't think of her name, but she used to be, used to work at town halls, and she was rent-renting her for many years.
I, I know who you mean, yep, yeah, okay, blind leading the blind, okay?
Uh, and Jim Davis had took and helped, uh, her with that and, and coordinated through the, through the fire department, uh, and had it set up there. Then when she left, it was Kerry that worked, she was the assistant at the tax collector. And she was helping out with it at some points, uh, and I was helping out, and I've been helping out and doing it for many years. She took in, was so genial for being her to be co, um, people working on it, and then a couple of years, she took in and left. So, then it was just me, and I've been doing it for quite a few years now, and it's just, I think it's time to get somebody new in here that can continue, uh, with it, hopefully. Uh, 'cause I think, you know, it's a good thing to do with the, you know, with the town, getting the, you know, so people aren't dumping the stuff into the ground and so forth.
And it is, it is, um, you know, the two, three times that I've gone, it's a pretty big operation. I mean, they're kinda spread right out around the back of the building, that's for sure, alright?
Yeah, so, basically, I mean, and it's, it's not real hard to coordinate everything. Uh, meetings start in May, uh, at the, you know, beginning of the year, so, um, your first meeting is in May. They're up at the Lakes Region Planning Committee, I remember, uh, so usually a six o'clock meeting, it lasts, it went from an hour to an hour and a half would be the, the max for the meeting. Uh, then they'll have a meeting in June, one in July, and then they usually have a wrap-up meeting in, uh, September. The September meeting didn't happen this year, so the next week, uh, there was some scheduling things with the head of it from the Lakes Region Planning Committee, so they actually did, and the next meeting is, uh, on the fourteenth, which is the wrap-up meeting for this year, uh, to just go over how everything went and so forth, and make plans and talk about for the next year, twenty-three.
So, it'd be nice if there was somebody that maybe you could go with them to that first meeting, is what you're trying to do?
For, for that, for next Wednesday, that, um, you know, both of us could go, and that way there I could help them with that.
Yeah.
And, and I said, I'm, you know, willing to help, uh...
You just don't wanna head it.
And you basically, you know, the, you're going to lay out the, um, the route that is gonna be the collection route, so where, where your cars coming in, um, for them to stop. Biggest spot we usually have in the morning, uh, which you used to have traffic back on...
Back out onto the main road, yeah, yeah.
Just even convenient, even have all that.
Sure.
But just a, a traffic flow pattern, uh, a place that they're gonna set up for dumping off the chemicals. A place set up to collect the universal waste, which is the rechargeable batteries for less than light bulbs.
Yeah.
The, uh, you know, it's, you know, just stuff like that that can be locked up and then stored for a little while. That's one of the, the biggest spots is we collect that stuff, uh, we collected it in, it last Saturday in July, and they're coming today to pick it up, so. And it's, you don't have to store it for a little while, you know, not out of the weather, so, and they're covered, you know, we already got the thing that, you know, that's in the department, takes some time for them to pick up that stuff there. Uh, and then contacting the company, the, whether it's Casellas or whatever, they get a dumpster in, uh, with a liner and so forth, and we're, you know, we're supposed to be placed up. Normally, if it's a new site, the whoever is running the, um, the, the collection, uh, company, they'll usually plan to have a meeting, uh, to come and oversee the site, to just see if it's gonna work well for them. That they have plenty of room to drop off.
Alright, and Lakes Region Planning Commission, they supply you with all of the, um, marketing and advertising, and then, which you usually supply us at town halls, and on the west side, and coast, and...
Uh, yeah, they'll, they get signs that they can give up, you know, banners and so forth. Um, they supply us with, you know, t-shirts so that, you know, uh, it's sort of, they're identifying people that are on site, who they are, and bright, right, you know, bright colors, so they stand up the traffic and keep people safe. And they'll, um, supplies with the flyers, well, they give us the flyers in a, you know, PDF format, and we print them up ourselves and so forth. They were doing a reimbursement for the dumpsters, um, for the collection sites for a little while, but this year here, they, they stopped that. We actually didn't use a reimbursement, because, uh, every year they, you know, Casellas would drop us off a dumpster, and I'd ask, where's the bill, I'll worry about it, you know? So, Casellas was very nice for the first years. Uh, this year, they did some of the bill, which I, they sent back to town hall, 'cause it said fire department, so...
Yeah.
Uh, but we did get a go from, uh, this year, but they're looking to see if maybe they can try, if they can get enough collections back together that they can do reimbursements for the dumpsters they didn't start.
Well, I guess one dumpster is, uh, is it one, one dumpster?
Yeah.
I guess it's better to have the stuff in the dumpster than, as you say, on the road.
I mean, you know, the, the, the town of Belmont, as long as all the other participating towns pay a percentage, you know, every year, you know, for this, you know, to be able to participate in it.
Yeah, we do pay, I think it's like, what, fifty-five hundred or six, six thousand to participate in that?
Yeah, to be part of the, uh, collection town. And, and that's what, you know, residents of Belmont, they can drop their stuff off in Belmont, and if they miss...
Then they can go to La Conia, because I remember the time, the couple of times I worked, there were people from Gillington or Tilton or wherever, yeah.
So, you can, you can go to any, any collection site, you can go to a participating town.
Awesome, so we need a new coordinator.
Now, just in saying, with, with all the collection sites in the towns, uh, the collection site in the fire department is the only one that it happens at. All the other ones are at DPW's, or there is some that, that DPW's...
Well, I'll be perfectly honest with you, Brian. If you're willing to take it on, I'll be your assistant. If you need help, I'll be more than willing to help, that's for sure.
I mean, I can...
As long as Tom's available to help out getting it running, it sounds like there's not a lot. I mean, I appreciate your words, but it's always felt on my on-call weekends anyway, so I always seem to work on them.
I always seem to work on them.
So, yeah, I mean, if we're all in grants, then we might as well.
I do think, obviously, the highway garage... You know, I'm trying to think how... But that's your guys'. It's to set it up so you can kind of do up in and out, so to speak, so, yeah.
I appreciate it.
Yep, and we'll make sure that the police department knows about that morning and to keep traffic under control and in and out and whatever.
I mean, I could ask admin staff.
No, no, we don't.
I could ask someone in the office if you prefer to be an admin staff or... I mean, Patrick was fine with saying no, and Brian can obviously say no. I mean, somebody has to take the ball, so, I mean, we need someone to run the program.
It doesn't sound like there's that much more involved other than the Saturday.
Mm-hmm.
That Tom's usually involved in.
Yeah, I talked to Brian a little bit about it. We're posting to some of the younger employees that we have in town that would like to come up the ladder. You know, we have some young gentlemen out there, ladies out there that love to take on that responsibility. And the extra money is always going to be helpful.
I think it makes it good to start a chain of command. I mean,
Right, but the only thing is, is that wherever it's being held, it's still somebody's gonna have to be there, somebody's gonna...
That's true, but I mean...
But yes, yep, yep.
You're reaching out to the younger employees and giving them the responsibility. It's a good thing.
Yep.
Why, do you think Kyle would? Do you think Kyle would be interested?
I'm open to help, so...
But you're not Kyle? I said, would Kyle be interested, do you think?
Kyle might be interested, you know, in some of your young employees. I mean, it's a good job, it's a lot of responsibility, but it's nice to have that.
Yep.
Well, and we all know with the...
Let's post it. The final head it up and then post it.
Why don't I post it internally, see if anyone else wants to take a bite, and then, Brian, you're the last one to get it. A hopatay is gonna go down to you.
We'll still be there helping out, so.
Well, I think, obviously, it's kind of, because of obviously witnessing the traffic backup, it's probably gonna be safer.
I think it's definitely a great idea to put it at the highway.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be.
Going to the backup on 140.
Right.
Like I said, I was just pointing out the advantage of having it at the by-the-vehicle. Like, the highway department is the place to put it. I just feel like, as John said, we just...
Yes.
These are, you know, the employee situations we've had, having to take over all the water and the sewer responsibility. Brian has stepped up, he's super busy.
Yep.
It's crazier than all the stuff that's going on that he's taking care of, and been a valuable help to me. I just, I don't want...
We don't wanna overburden.
I don't want my law on here so bad, but...
Understood, yep.
It's just, that's my concern, that's all.
I will see if Colleen has some time today to make a cute little flyer asking for help because the next meeting is the fourteenth, and I would really like that person to go with Tom to attempt.
He definitely should have to be there.
So that they can, and then that person can meet the others in the organization and the other towns and know what that wrap-up meeting looks like. We'll get that up to him.
And again, maybe if no one does step up, maybe they're willing to step up and volunteer that morning and whatever, you know, and just...
One thing I could just suggest, I mean, you can put a flyer up, and I'm excited this is next Wednesday. If you don't have someone that's gonna jump right on and say, "Yeah, I wanna do it."
Brian's gonna go.
Just to have somebody to go up, and then it could be, you know, a, you know, I mean, coach here person sort of thing.
Yep, we'll figure it out. We'll figure it out. Okay, awesome, okay.
Do you suggest two people, as it was before? Or do you think it's just a one-man coordination effort?
A one-man person could do it. I mean, Kevin used to go to the meetings, and I was taking care of the dumpsters and the universal waste. You know, back then, we were, which we were the only collection site doing it, we were collecting
From everywhere, yep.
Electronics.
Yes. Now, are you still collecting elec... You stopped doing that, okay, all right, okay, good, I'm, you know, all right, okay. We'll, we'll figure it out, and I'm available. Put me on that list.
Maybe you should be dead.
No! I don't get paid enough. No. There we go, yeah, just what I need, uh-huh. Okay, so we'll, we'll have somebody for you to go with that meeting. More than likely, it may be Brian, but unless someone really steps up and wants to take the bull by the horns, that's great. No matter who it is, they're still gonna have to work with the highway department because that's where it's gonna be held, and these guys are gonna have to set up, probably, somebody set up. Okay, very good, thank you. We are on to Schicka Regional School District, SRO officer. So, are you both gonna come up? Okay, we have, we have Mike Tursi and the chief here. We'll sit here and listen. Good morning.
Nice to see everybody. So, I'm here this morning now to talk with the board about potentially having a new position to the Belmont Police Department force for us, full-time school resource officer. In the past, we've had a full-time and part-time school resource officer. And over the past six years that I've been here, we're now down to no resource officer at all. And speaking with Mark...
Please, guys, please, excuse me.
Speaking with Mark and speaking with Alicia about this, my understanding is that there was never really designated a designated school resource officer position on the force. There was a patrolman that was pulled for those responsibilities that we need in the schools. So, at times, clearly, when that patrolman was needed, they were being pulled out to do for other duties. And my understanding as well is in the past, they didn't have the amount of calls and needs that they do now. So, over the years, that patrolman that was considered a school resource officer got pulled more and more. And now, we don't really even have that opportunity right now, where if we need some sort of service in the schools, we're calling dispatch, and dispatch is pulling a patrolman to come to the schools. So, what we're looking at, and hopefully we get the board's support on this, is that we would like to add a, potentially a full-time school resource officer to the force funded by the school district for the time school is in session. And that comes out to about forty-five weeks, I believe, and it might be some additional time outside of regular school hours. Could be over some time on vacations as well as over the summer, but we could work that out. My understanding, talking to the chief and talking to Alicia, is that in order to do that, you have to add a position to your force.
To the budget. My first question, okay. So, we add another officer to the budget, all right? And I don't foresee this happening, but I'm gonna ask the question anyways, all right? And two years from now, the school says, "This really isn't gonna work, we're gonna hire, I don't know, say, an independent or whatever, a security company, whatever it might be, all right, just for sake." So, we don't need that person anymore. We own that person, the town does, because obviously, at that particular time, that person is a full-time officer, probably part of the union, whatever, and now, out of the blue, you say to us, "We're not going to fund that anymore. Now, we have that person, and that's not necessarily in our budget." And you don't just tell somebody, "Well, gee, we're not gonna fund that position, buy." I guess, if we can even find that person, okay? I think that's the other issue we run into, is we're not even fully staffed at the moment.
No, we're not.
Yep.
One of the issues that we've, a logistical issue that we've been trying to deal with is assigning somebody to the school for the time the school is in session is not the issue. That can be handled very easily.
All right.
We run into some union issues, we run into some pay issues.
Yep.
If they're hired into the town, they don't acquire a two-week vacation until after six months. This is good for the first part of the year. They'll get six months through that they're hired for, and they'll be able to fulfill those obligations. The issue comes where the school takes Thanksgiving break, Christmas break, spring break.
Oh, I see, yeah.
So, who's paying for that time that... Because they don't have time off, so they have to come and work on those days.
Yeah.
So, who's picking up the pay for those days?
Yeah.
And once they are here and they get to their vacation time, I can't tell them when they can and cannot take it.
You're right, what if it's...
If they decide during the school week, you know, during school, that I wanna take off this because I'm taking my kids at Disney, and it happens to be after the school has gone back into session, I can't tell them, "No, I have to deny that because you've agreed to be in school."
But can't that be part of, can't that be, when you're writing the position?
Then you're writing a contract for that person, then you're contracting that person. The ideal, the ideal person would be a retired person coming back part-time.
A retired police officer?
Yes.
Oh, he'd probably end up in jail, but, okay.
But doing it part-time.
Sure.
Because then, when the school is off, whether it's workshop, whatever, then they're off. It's not an issue. And then, when summer comes, they're off for the summer, they report back in August or September, whatever, school gets, goes into session. On the full-time side, now I have them for two months in the summer, plus I have to deal with them on the time that they're off, that they're not taking their vacation. And generally, IRSROs took their vacation in the summertime. Joe did it, they all did it. They didn't do it during school time.
Sure.
And they were on my staff, so during those times, whether it be in the winter or the spring, they would come in, they'd work patrol, they'd handle calls, they'd do police work. Some of what we're running into is, we've got three potential prospects that would be interested, but I'm not quite sure how we're gonna fulfill the needs, because they don't really wanna patrol. They wanna be specifically...
But they wanna be full-time?
They wanna be full-time, because they are, they're currently full-time in different places.
Yeah, yeah.
So, they wanna stay full-time, because obviously, they're in a retirement system and they're building their dollars, but they wanna be in the school. They're not patrol quality, they don't want that, they don't want that aspect of work. So, can the school keep them busy enough? Are we gonna pay them for the two months they're out of school in the middle of the summer and not get the benefit of them working? Are they gonna have juvenile work to do, plus court and things throughout the summer? Sure. Because courts are backed up, they could be June, July.
But that juvenile work is really the school's, they're really...
Right, so, it's a question of, you know, does the school pick up the whole salary, and then what do we do with the vacation portion? You know, the timeframe, do we pick up a portion of that pay?
After you had raised the question of the vacations, I did reach out to Anna. Unfortunately, the school board also retains Anna, so there was a conflict of interest there. She did give me just a vague that it could be negotiated with the union, some of that vacation, but...
Because we can't be the only ones that are gonna deal with this.
No, and I had asked her if her colleagues have dealt with the same thing, and I'm sure she will get back. Unfortunately, the school board and us will have to agree to say, "Yes, you guys can talk to each other, we can all talk cohesively about this."
Oh, I see.
But there is a conflict of interest, so she couldn't really speak to me too much because she's already retained.
So, she has to have permission from the school board to be able to give us information and give them information.
Right, I mean, we're both working at the same thing, so whether they do or don't, that's their decision. But she just seemed to think that would be something that we would negotiate or talk to with the union as part of the...
Okay.
Right.
Doesn't, doesn't SRO officer have to have different training than a typical...
There is, there is training for an SRO. There's a national conference that they go to, there's some independent trainings that we can send them to. Basically, it...
It teaches them how to deal with...
And it teaches them how to deal with it, but it also deals with the juvenile laws that change
Continuing.
continuously. You have to stay on board with that, working and doing what you can't do.
All right.
We had a pretty good MOU with the school anyway on what the function of that SRO would be. Years ago, prior to, prior to late, they were abused in respect to, they were doing things they really shouldn't have been doing as a police officer at the school.
Okay, yep.
So, we've kinda recognized the problem and taken care of that. It's just getting by the logistics of the union and how we do this. We contract them. Do they agree to the contract where they don't take vacation time? That time that the school is off, what do we do with them? Do we just bring them in the building? Do we pay that time? And if we do, they're not gonna patrol, obviously, and I'm sure they're gonna have juvenile work that they can do, because it's not...
I understand, it's becoming, it's becoming...
That they're not busy.
Ideally, he would find the best candidate to be the SRO during school hours, and then be willing to fill in part-time when he has the need, you know, on the holidays, nights and weekends when he's not needed at the school. That would be ideal.
Right, but what, but what he's saying is, the ones that he's thinking of or that are interested really don't wanna patrol.
Not really.
Yeah.
There's one that I need to reach out to, that might...
Yeah.
But, again, it's only in the talk stages. They may not wanna leave where they're at.
So, what about transportation? Now, if you have one officer, and you have four schools? Canterbury, elementary, high...
Well, I think, are you looking for just a middle school at this point? Am I... Oh, no, you're looking for somebody...
Middle and high, I would expect.
Oh, okay.
I think for actually the three schools.
So, do we, do we furnish that person transportation if he's at the middle school and they got a problem at the high school? Is he gonna have a cruiser with him while he's working?
Yeah.
He's gonna need one.
Yeah.
In the past, in the past, they've taken a cruiser that's been, that's sitting, that's idle because of the officers that occupy that car. We have two guys assigned per car. So, if they're off and that car is sitting there, we'll take that, or if it's, if the detail car is not out on the detail, we'll take the detail car. And there's many times they've taken their own vehicles and just reported right to the school, they don't even come to PD.
Well, that goes back.
With technology today, we can...
Well, and it's not like you're right in the middle, you're close by.
They don't have to come here to do their...
And the same thing is, I'm listening to you, you're telling us that during the vacation week for the school, he might have a court case coming up. So, you can't, he may, he can't, when it comes to court cases, and he's basically the prosecutor, and he's gonna prosecute. So, he's taking that, he's either gonna be able to sign that to our existing prosecutor, or he's gonna change his own life based on something we can't control. When the court, like the court system right now, they're backed up, and they're probably gonna be backed up for eternity.
And that person that takes the SRO program has to take on the prosecution portion of the juvenile side.
Yeah.
Dave can handle it occasionally, and I mean...
I understand, I understand that, but...
Dave's gone from one day a week to five days a week now, for court, so he's up to his eyeballs. He's four hundred cases in the hole right now, so he's sitting in, sitting on four hundred cases. So, I think overall, we still have some logistics to work out, coming here in front of you today.
To see if, for our...
To float the idea. I've been, I've been bringing this up to the school board at many meetings, letting them know what I'm thinking and what the need is.
I think, I think there's a true need.
So, on that, Mr. Pike, we've looked at between twenty and twenty-one school year, the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. We had fifteen students in twenty-twenty-one that were court involved. Last year, we had fifty-five. So, you can see the uptick in court involvement. Not all of them require SRO services.
Right, but...
However, you can see the trend and the need is there. So, this also goes back to your question, Ruth, is that, you know, the need is there.
Yeah.
And this is also working with the union, like we do with the teachers' association. We have, we have positions that are recognized in the collective bargaining agreement that in their contracts, a separate contract says it is contingent upon grant funding.
Okay.
So, in a contract, you can, you can lay out specifically, you know, this is a grant-funded position, where this might be, this is a school district-funded position.
Oh, okay, so this isn't grant money, this is coming from, you know, coming from us, yeah.
I'm proposing this in our proposed operating budget. We could also look at how we can make it work for this year, as a matter of fact. So, you know, the need is there. We're concerned going into the school year without SRO services and having to pull a patrolman where it's really short-staffed to, you know, pulling from that need in the town.
So, school started. So, you're, you, logistics-wise, all right, that's, you got, you guys gotta figure that out. I mean, we can't... I guess what you're looking for from us is, do we agree that this is needed? I agree it's needed, obviously. John, I think it's, it's, you know, it's just to work that out. And I guess my question is, are you, are you in hopes of finding someone yesterday instead of six months from now or whatever?
I actually hope to have it first months ago. Yeah, we've been working on this a lot.
Okay, so, that person will, here we go, that person will receive their paycheck from the town of Belmont,
Correct.
from, through the police, and then the school, however you do that, will then reimburse...
Us.
Us, but that's not going in the general fund. That's going in the police, that's going directly...
Lot more's part of that logistical process of how we will...
Right, right.
How that will move, whether it be the monthly reimbursement, whether it be...
Say the school, say Mark was able to find somebody in two weeks, all right? We don't have that money in our budget, and the police doesn't, the police budget isn't set up for that, okay?
So, for this year, he would have to pull it out of his part-time line budget, because we don't have a line designated for an SRO officer full-time, so for now...
And then what do we do with the monies that come in from the school to pay for that officer?
That I don't know yet. That's part of the logistics that we are, are looking at.
Because he shouldn't have to be for the, that money's going for the police department. That's only, we'll have to figure that out.
Catherine, our finance director, has raised her hand, so Catherine, you may speak. I assume you have a suggestion?
Yes, I would recommend how we handle this. It would, you know, it would, you know, it is a revenue that we'd be receiving from the school district, so it would be one of those things that's like an offsetting revenue, gross appropriation, basically. So, you know, as it is a revenue, we have to recognize that such, when we're setting the tax rate and coming up with our four thirty-four revenues that we're expecting to receive, it should be included there. So, essentially, it would be a net gross appropriation on both sides, revenue and expenditure.
So, it'd be coming in as an offsetting revenue.
Yeah.
So, then, we're, the school district is well-poised to do this in the sense that we already have a line in our operating budget for school resource officers, ten thousand dollars that we, we send over to the town every year. So, for our budgeting purposes, where we up that line from ten thousand to what we agree on for time hours and so forth. And you can see that in our, those operating budgets. So, people in the town, Belmont and Canterbury, we see, actual Belmont, if we focus on Belmont, can see...
If that money, excuse me, Mike, if that money's coming in already, what, where's it going, back in the general fund? Where does that money presently at ten thousand dollars go? That's...
Yeah, that's recorded in the general fund.
General fund.
Yeah.
It goes back in the general fund.
Yeah, we got it.
So, let's see, in theory, we're, it's the same pair of pants when I get in the pocket, when I empty one pocket to fill another.
Yeah, but that's an internal thing we'll have to figure out, but I guess, you know, we understand there's a need.
It's definitely a proposal we've never dealt with before.
No, but I find it hard to believe we're not the only town that's dealing with this, yeah.
It's always been, we've always been able to supply someone.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Do these, do these other towns have the same situation? I mean, can you revert back to one of them to see how they handled it?
I think most of the towns, they budget right through the police department, SRO line, so it's budgeted in the police budget. It's not in correlation to the school district.
Yeah.
Where there's monies changing.
Yeah, which we may have to do that. I mean, again, that's something that Catherine and Alicia, I guess, have gotta figure that out. That's, that's an accounting thing, not, you know, but I understand, yeah, I know where you're coming from, yeah.
And, you know, I think...
And I've seen other towns that it is budgeted with the school district throughout my career in the ADO. It's basically like Superintendent Tursi's saying, it's just, it's the revenues received in conjunction or just separately, whether it be monthly, quarterly, or just an annual payment to cover that position.
Yeah, all right, okay.
And people in the town of Belmont are gonna see, they would see that in the proposed operating budget for the town. They would also see it in the proposed operating budget for the school district, so we'd have to do a really nice job of explaining why we're seeing this in both budgets.
Yeah, I think, I find it hard to believe that there's gonna be any pushback in regards to an SRO. And I know, is one gonna be enough? I mean, we don't know. I mean, it's, yeah. I guess we're gonna look at it at this point, if we can get one, all right, and see how that works. And then, obviously, we have our police officers as backups, which I'm sure they've probably had to back up anyways. Whether there's one or two, it doesn't matter, and one step at a time, I guess, is kinda how I try to look at it. But, I mean, at this point, we still have two openings, plus we have one gentleman at the academy.
We have one in the academy that graduates this month.
Good.
We have two prospects. I've gotten two conditional offers for the full-time jobs, one certified, one's not.
Okay.
Which would have to go to the academy in January, still finishing. That runs on them.
Yep.
And today, we're squaring in a part-time work person.
Yep.
That's gonna help offset patrol time here. He's grown to full-time in another department. I've had two that have gone to be the financial side, it doesn't work right now for the full-time side, but they're willing to work on the part-time side. It helps out, offset calls, learn the area. They'd like to come here, like, be in this area. It's just that...
Well, we're in the, obviously, we're in, we're in union negotiations too, yeah, yeah.
You know, they can't go backwards in today's, today's markets.
Okay, so I guess, definitely have the board's support, and it's just...
And you have the, your blessing is to move forward in twenty-three with a full-time SRO in the budget?
I would say that we need to put it in the budget, yes, yeah, on the police side.
And for twenty-two, I think our only option is to...
Part-time.
Part-time.
The good news is that we've got one there.
Until, yes.
Because we haven't had a part-time one, so...
Sure, sure.
The money is there, thankfully.
Yeah, all right.
So, on that note, so we're looking at between now and next school year, would it only be in part-time?
No, just until January.
Until January.
Yeah, we just have to, we're, yeah.
That's the only place we're gonna be able to take money from right now.
Oh, okay. Even with two empty slots, you can't take?
He needs to fill those.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know, yeah, we do, yeah, yeah, I know, yeah, yeah.
We're running a hollow, empty day right now, so...
All right, okay, well, and I guess, is there something that we have to send Anna to give her...
I think the school board and myself would probably need to talk, or I think the school board probably needs to speak with Anna if they agree. I mean, they may say, "No, we don't want you to talk to the town because we've already retained you." I honestly don't, you know, from what she said, they would have to...
I find that, I find that a little...
They would have to sign, sign, just in agreement, she said.
It's just, yeah, I, I find that hard to believe, that's kind of a no-brainer in my book, but, you know.
And we very discussed the MOU, which would be, addresses your concerns about them not just being able to drop the officer mid-year.
Right.
So, we've already talked about, you know, the need and the want for that.
And I guess my only other, and this is just, my only other comment will be, is that, and I think you understand, there could be a catastrophe in the school, there could be a catastrophe somewhere in town or whatever, and all hands on deck. I mean, and that's just, that's, you know, that, that's a given, all right? I just wanna make sure that while he left to go do this, well, you know, it's gonna be, okay, all right, good.
And part of our discussion was, you know, the need before was kind of shared, it was SRO, and then when they patrol. Because the school board is proposing to flip the bill for the benefits and the salary, they have requested that they keep them as a hundred percent as possible.
Sure, yeah, during the school year, yeah.
And so, Mark knows that, and Mark is willing to do that, because his, I mean, he's come to us plenty of times in the past saying how much his officers are always pulled off the street to go to the school, so we agree the need.
I mean, that's a, that's gonna be, yeah.
Yeah, and we had discussed, I said, if there is a catastrophic need, I am sure, you know, that he will have to pull him or her if necessary.
Okay, good. Senior of all, hot guys. Yes, please, yes, yeah, definitely. Senior ballpark, guys. Yes, please. Yes, yeah, definitely. Okay, Alicia, do we have any other? Thank you, guys. Do we have any other new business?
Uh, I have a few items that kind of popped up after I posted the notice. Um, we had discussed, and I did, um, post on the selectmen's page. I just wanted to publicly thank D P W, fire, and police, and Busby for their work on the, the, the water main break that happened over the weekend.
Holiday weekend.
Holiday weekend. Craig, what time did you guys get called in and finally leave?
Uh, about eight-thirty Sunday night.
And I was still getting calls at like midnight, twelve-thirty, that they were still there, so.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was, it was a long, long haul.
A few of our residents were without water for a little bit, and we appreciate their patience and understanding, but everyone worked together, and it was all hands on deck between all the departments and.
We had the water back on by about ten-thirty Sunday, uh, Monday mornings.
Awesome.
Thank everyone for their hard work, and Busby for wrangling in their crew on a holiday weekend. But we.
Wasn't easy.
Got it, finished, and I know, I understand there's some additional paving and road ditching, Craig, that has to be had.
Yeah.
There's still additional work that will need to be addressed with the road and the ditching because the washout's so bad.
The, the, the main break kind of washed out a section of the road.
Yeah.
So we've got it open, but it undermined a certain section, so we'll have to cut back and have that paved. The swales on each side were, um.
Undermined.
Undermined.
Yeah.
Um, we're gonna have to, after we get the paving done, we'll have to redo the swales, repave the swales.
Yeah.
It was a huge geyser. I mean, it touched the top of the power lines.
Yeah.
It was huge.
Well, fortunately, there was, there weren't power lines. It was just phone and cable.
Oh.
So it wasn't electrical, thankfully, thankfully for that.
I saw the picture of them.
And thankfully, the thunder shower was north.
Air.
Yeah.
Very happily.
Yeah, so, yeah, everybody worked all together. I was really proud of the guys. Thanked Busby, myself. It was, uh, very fortunate that we were able to get enough help because we had guys gone away, they had guys gone away. But you know what? It all worked out, so.
Good.
It can always be, it can always be worse. It could have been January, and it could have been, um.
Twenty below zero.
Exactly, and if it was a hundred feet up the hill, um, we probably would have lost Donovan's house, so. Yeah, so you gotta look, you gotta look at the bright side, you know?
Yep, there you go. All right, thank you.
Uh, we already brought up the, uh, the governor coming tomorrow to the orchard. I don't know if anyone would like to attend.
I'm planning to attend.
Okay.
Yep.
What, what time is that?
Eleven thirty.
He's gonna be there around eleven-thirty, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's just a kind of a meet and greet, and it's a good little publicity for Belmont, and they would ask a selectman to attend and smile and have a donut and have an apple, and they, um, Stone Mountain Farm donated some apples to us, so if anyone would like to take an apple.
Appreciate that.
Awesome. I got a request from a resident. Um, they were a little confused about the sales update and the process, and they had made a suggestion, and it's too far past the process now to do, but I think a good suggestion next year is to have K R T come in person and do an explanation of the process. I think we.
At one of our meetings, you mean, maybe? Okay, yeah.
Well, before the revale update happens again, so I did speak to.
I believe they're going to do it again next year.
They will. So this will happen all again next year.
All right, so we'll make sure that we have them here and they can.
Yeah, I spoke to Rob Tozier this morning, and he said, that's fine. We'll just have to plan it well in advance.
Yeah.
We did do all of the, essentially, the P R that K R T provided us. It went on, you know, the website, on Facebook, on the selectmen's page. It went in the newsletter. It went in the newspaper. So I think we did a good job of trying to reiterate the process, of trying to get people under, to stand it. In my conversation with Rob this morning, he'll give me a final number, but he feels maybe we had about three hundred appeals. Which isn't bad when you look at the grand scheme of all the residents we have, all the houses.
Sure, yeah.
So he's gonna give me that breakdown later. They are, today's their last day for the appeals, and they'll have the information entered in tomorrow for us to move forward with the final, the final.
Okay.
So soon, and then just ask everyone to hold tight for the tax rate setting and.
We should have that.
October.
Is it October?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right, okay.
So we will organize that next year.
All right.
And invite the town's people to come.
Okay.
That is it for other new business.
Do we have any old business that we need to do?
I am just going to announce that at our next September nineteenth meeting, we will have a public hearing to accept the highway funds, the excess highway funds that were given, uh, in the amount of, I think it was one sixty-five, six seventy-seven. I was holding off until we got the bridge money. I know what we're getting for the bridge money, but we haven't seen a deposit yet. Um, I'll just go ahead and move forward with that public hearing.
Can we, um, so I think a public hearing has to be posted, correct? And it has to be posted so many days in advance?
Yeah, it will get posted today. I already sent it to the newspaper, so she probably already spotted while I was in this meeting, so it'll get posted.
All right.
I think tomorrow.
So that's to be, what, thirty days or something?
At ten.
Ten, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're just in there. That is, that's.
No, no else?
Um, I have Franklin Savings Bank for our loan for that D P W truck that we are still waiting for. They are very picky on their language. So they would like me to reread into the record a correction. So my, my statement is, the anticipated delivery date of the truck and plow is December of twenty twenty-two. If for some reason the delivery is delayed, the town will encumber the payment due in December of twenty twenty-two and hold the funds to make the first payment at delivery in January of twenty twenty-three. There was a miscommunication between F S B and myself where he had relayed the information to me that if we didn't get delivery, then essentially our loan terms would be null and void, and we would have to start over. And he said, no, you just need to finish up the loan and get everything buttoned up before December.
Okay, so if the truck doesn't come in.
They would still carry forward the loan.
All right.
Terms that we have now into twenty-three.
All right, okay, yeah, so.
Question. The truck comes.
That's it.
Okay, I understand that. Let me finish before you speak, please.
No, I'm not, I'm listening.
I've been thinking about this since we signed these papers. Having done a little bit in the automobile business in my life, once we have a serial number for that vehicle, we can have a loan on that vehicle, because that's our vehicle. In other words, they'll send us the bill sheet. We know what the price of the truck's gonna be. We could induce the loan so we don't lose the rate. That's my fear, because the truck may come. We may not get it for a month and a half. It may come in December, but the outfit of the plows and the wing and all the stuff that's gonna be put on it, the body, may not happen until January or February. But we have the truck.
Oh, I see.
So my, my question for the bank is, if we have the vehicle, the vehicle's been delivered, we're gonna start making our payments on it, even though it's not physically usable because it doesn't have the outfits. But the bank loan includes the outfits. And they don't have serial numbers typically. The body might, but the plow probably won't.
Well, I was just gonna say, because there's different serial numbers on different pieces of glass going on.
On the body, they probably would, the plows, they may not. I'm not sure. I know on a, on a commercial, regular commercial sale, the plows now have serial numbers because the banks finally realize if they had to repossess something on a, on a commercial side, they financed the plow for fifteen thousand dollars that never was put on the truck because somebody put it on the buyer's order, got the money, kept the money, okay? So my question to Franklin Savings Banks is as follows. That truck comes, and it's physically at the shop, goes from, it's gonna go from what, McDivitt? To the outfitters, which is in.
H B Fairfield.
Yep. It may be down there a month, month and a half. Because we're not the only town in this problem, but I want to exercise that loan when that truck shows up.
I just skipped out, and I just talked to the bank. So we, Alicia and I have been in this process with the bank the last couple of days, so, um, my, I, I got ahold of our salesman today. He is in the process this afternoon. He was on a plane yesterday. He is going to get us an updated invoice. He can't give us the full serial number. He can give us the last four numbers, which will satisfy the bank. So that will be sent to them. Hopefully, I get that today. I just talked to Franklin Savings and said the latest, probably tomorrow morning. They also said, Alicia, that on the updated quote that we got from, um, H B Fairfield, we had it put, um, Franklin Savings Bank for the town of Belmont. Apparently, that has to be put on a different location on the, on the invoice or the, or the sales quote. So I don't know if we can manipulate that document or not, but it's, uh, so where it says buy, where it says on the top, I believe where it says on, it says town of Belmont, and then it says, I think we need to put the buyer as Franklin Savings Bank and, um, the town of Belmont as the. Okay, so this is, okay, so we're, I mean, we are on it, so, um.
Oh, we're on it.
Oh, we're on it, so, yeah. It's a little more complicated than I, I've done in the past, but it's, it's just because everything's so backed up.
We typically don't go through a bank, correct?
No.
Well, we, well, we've bought out leases before. We leased them and then bought, we own the leases.
Well, we've always had a lease company that, that handled this, not a bank.
But this was a, which.
Well, actually, it was. It was Berlin City Bank that handled our leases.
It was actually, it was actually from my, from my memory, it was Gene had a contact down in Florida.
Yeah, which is, that's Berlin, that's Berlin City Bank.
Okay, so they did. But apparently, Gene had done some research and, and got these rates from Franklin Savings, so this is why we jumped on this train.
Yep.
So buying this truck is almost as complicated as buying a house.
It's been a nightmare.
Well, it's, it's easy because you got the house there. We haven't, we haven't gotten it.
Well, not always, if it's a mod.
We, we got the money, we, we got the money, but we don't.
And you just don't, and you, and they say one thing, you just don't know. I mean, last I heard, we're gonna get it sometime in October, but, you know, we're just, I'm.
Well, how long did it take to get the body on one of them back a year or so ago?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that alone. I mean, you can get the truck like in October, but you might not get the body until January. I mean, I don't know, but.
We gotta exercise the loan.
Right, right.
I had, I had the truck, and it was six months before I got, got the parts for the body. It's, it's just, it's just a nightmare.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fun times.
Well, it, you know, you just, you gotta roll with it. It's just, it's different times, you know?
Yep, that's for sure.
Anybody want an apple?
Take an apple, Craig. All right, do we have any other old business?
The last thing I have is to give you an update on the mill and the renovation. I did a walkthrough with H L Turner and his assistant yesterday for about three hours of my day, um, walking every single floor of this building, going over the plans that me and Sarah created for them and their interpretation of my plans.
Your plans?
Um, so I think they get a better idea, um, of how the building was, is laid out, why we kept what we did with minimal moving walls, adding walls. I think they were truly working on maybe an original set of plans of this building that aren't true to how they really is, how it's really laid out. So they said they maybe a couple more days or next week, I would have the revised plans that I will scrub again, and hopefully we can come to some terms.
Good.
That is all I have for old business, and you have a non-public.
One thing, Alicia, we, we finally have a prospective quality candidate to join our team, so hopefully we'll, uh, we're gonna make a decision. We're gonna talk to Alicia today, and we're gonna make a decision on a new hire, so.
Oh, that was for the sewer, you know?
Yes, well, we have to, we have to talk about how we're gonna, um, I just don't want to, um, I don't want to affect the highway budget. So even though he's, even though we've integrated, you know, we've kind of pulled everything together, so we're doing everything now. All our guys are getting cross-trained on, on absolutely everything, so I just don't wanna, you know, it's not gonna be another highway position, but it's gonna be a highway position. So we're gonna just figure out how we can manipulate the numbers and, and make this work, so.
Well, obviously, we're all, as you say, you're cross-training, so it's, it's, it's.
We're never gonna run into this situation again.
Yeah, okay.
Ever.
Good, good, okay, very good. Any other old business? I think I've said that ten times.
I do not. I do have a non, non-public other letter C.
Okay, so we're gonna go into non-public ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman num, Roman numeral number two, letter C. Roll call?
Sunny Pat?
Ruth Mooney?
Come on, Pike.
Thank you, everyone. I called you to tell you I know we're ready. You need to come get it. Thank you, Colleen. Did you get all those minutes?